Now, there's a younger couple, he comes in and he has the whole house. And he took me out of the door. He cleared his throat. I took all summer from mid-May until they finished.
How are you? You okay?
Just because we.
March this house is probably.
Sixty.
Going to get, because it's just no activity on it.
What's his actual birthday?
And it's small.
Oh, that's standing for it too.
They, they took, and I call it decharmed ways.
She's turning sixteen nine this year.
House one time as we were out in pie.
Yeah.
When it.
Oh, he's not insane.
It had none of the charm and the warmth that she had. And they just, you know, silly people that she got.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not her problem.
Oh, it's up to you. I didn't look at it. It's just hanging.
There's somebody brought something.
Oh, hi there. Thanks, Colin.
All our mics on? The Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at seven oh one. Secretary, please call.
Dennis Jabolski.
Here.
Kendra Barbarina is here. Tim Boyd.
Here.
Bob Dorshewitz.
Here.
Gail Greer.
Here.
John Idsel.
Here.
Keith Postel.
Here.
And we, is there a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Postel and supported by.
Boyd.
Commissioner Boyd.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And is there a motion to approve the minutes as submitted of August seventeenth?
Mr. Chairman, it was brought to my attention by Commissioner Boyd that on some of the minutes, instead of saying ayes all, it says motion passed. So just in the future, if we do a, maybe a consensus or have it uniform throughout the minutes is what Commissioner Boyd was asking.
Okay. So is that a correction or just a suggestion?
A suggestion. So with that being said, I move that we approve the minutes as submitted.
There's support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Barbarina and supported by Commissioner Boyd to approve the minutes as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And now we have public hearing, or public comments on any item that is not on the agenda. So the floor is open.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. My name is John Stewart, one four nine five six Maplewood, thirty-eight year resident at that home in Lake Point. And I'm an attorney with an office that I've owned on for thirty-eight years at eleven forty-two South Main Street in Plymouth. Self-employed and on straight commission for over forty years. Current elected trustee. I was not asked to come here to witness the singing of fellow planner Nani Wolf, who is celebrating her birthday tonight. I am here only for positive comments. Fifteen years ago, when I was chairman of higher education for the State of Michigan Operations Committee, I hosted the president of the University of Michigan, Ann Arbor, Mary Sue Coleman. One of the first persons that I called was Dennis Jabolski. But for his integrity and his leadership and service to the University of Michigan. As of this date, that is forty-five consistent and consecutive years in the honorable deployment of the University of Michigan. As trustee Dorshewitz, treasurer Dorshewitz knows, I'm Spartan, but I wore the Michigan lapel pin and my musical tie for Dennis today.
I will bring it white the next time.
I hope we can have another joint meeting. We have not had one in a year and a half. There are seventy-two days left in this year. I hope the trustees of Plymouth Township and the Planning Commission can have another joint meeting. I thank you. I am grateful for you and I appreciate you. Well, my mother taught me differently than the last few presidents we've had. My mother taught me that a word to the wise is sufficient, so I don't like to repeat myself, but I will. I'm thankful, I appreciate you, and I am grateful for you. Because you have the hard work of vetting, questioning the developers, and shaping and fashioning the growth and development of our township. I would like to ask you to factor in something that has become very near and dear to me. On July eighteenth, I was driving home. I'm a senior citizen. I thought I was entitled to at three o'clock in the afternoon. Up Northville Road to Five Mile. I turned right, heading east on Five Mile. I went up the hill. The recently blacktop smoothed half-mile drag strip called the service drive there of Schoolcraft. A driver blew through the stop sign, nailed me right in the side. My car overturned. I was upside down for twelve minutes. Thankful for the firefighters of station number two out of Lake Point that it's open. They came and they rolled me out of there. I'm thankful for my seatbelt and I'm thankful for my hundred and eighty sit-ups a day that I do as an exercise fanatic, because I was okay. But I was T-boned. And you do not want to go, I'm not your professional friend if I tell you to go anywhere near the intersection of Five Mile and Northville Road around five o'clock. The traffic there is horrendous. To make a turn, it's going to take you three light changes. But I'm also observing that kind of traffic on Ann Arbor Road. I'm concerned about the developments and we must go onward and forward at the Elks. I'm concerned about Northridge. I'm concerned about developers coming to the trustees and going around the Planning Commission when you have voted unanimously to reject their plan. And then they come to the Board of Trustees. I made the statement at the last meeting and I want to say it here now. I don't plan to vote as a trustee for any development or any developer unless there's a majority vote from you, this board. So we need to go onward and forward. And I want to thank you for this time tonight. I have made my pledge with the mailings that my wife and I did to be as kind and as helpful to as many people in the township as possible. But I also want to commit to making every effort I can to only vote and act in the best interest of the people of Plymouth Township. Thank you very much and good night.
Well, thank you for your comments and your confidence in the Planning Commission. Appreciate it. Anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, if not. We have a public hearing on draft zoning ordinance, our text amendment on performance guarantees. And I'll turn that over to our planners to walk us through that.
Thank you, Chairman Jabolski. Good evening, Commissioners. And this proposal is an amendment to Article thirty of the zoning ordinance to really outline the process for the collection and potential caching of performance bonds as related to development projects. And so this ordinance language does not change the process for the Planning Commission or for the site plan review. It largely has to do with the building department and their ability to ensure that the developments that are approved by this body are constructed as proposed. So for instance, the performance bond ensures that the cost estimates for those site improvements, whether that be landscaping or lighting or other amenities on the site, is provided for, that that bond is submitted with the township as it goes through the construction process and through the certificate of occupancy. Those items are checked off, that they have been properly installed as outlined on the plan. And then the bond can be returned to the developer. It also provides the process and stipulations for if the project is not satisfactorily completed, that the bond could be utilized by the township to make those improvements or stabilize the site, whatever may be needed for the project. So this really gives teeth to the policy that the township is currently operating. And it does belong in the zoning ordinance and not in the general code.
So how is the amount of the performance bond determined? Is it the total project cost or?
It's the cost for all the specific elements. So let's say that they were proposing, you know, a gazebo and a landscape plan. Those cost estimates have to be broken down. They're sent to the township for review, either by the planning department and/or the engineer, to review those cost estimates and make sure that they're accurate. And then, once that's confirmed, the performance bond amount is settled on and submitted to the township.
So they have to get a performance bond for the entire cost of the project?
For the site improvements as related to like the amenities. If they're proposing, you know, for instance, Henry Ford facility, the benches and the lighting and the trash cans, the bike racks, all the landscaping.
But not the facade or including the facade?
Not the facade, no.
How about the footprint of the, you know, I'm curious if there's something out of place that's building related as far as the actual structure? Or items, more difficult things to fix like that?
Well, in, those, those elements are a little bit easier to monitor only because they are being consistently reviewed, like construction-wise, as they go through the permitting process of the temporary CVO and then the final CVO. Right, all the inspectors are going out at various different points to ensure that that construction is being completed to the building code. Whereas the landscaping really isn't until the very end. I mean, the developer could essentially construct the building and then not want to do the benches or not want to do the gazebo or finish the landscaping and walk away.
Run out of money.
Yeah, that's, that's the more common thing that we see, that the building may be constructed correctly, the parking lot was constructed correctly, but some of those smaller site amenities that really happen after can sometimes be forgotten. And this is a way to, to hold a developer, you know, feet to the fire and make sure that those improvements are made.
And who is our, do we use regular building department personnel for that inspection of items like landscape and amenities? Or does that come from the yourself planner's office, et cetera?
Typically, what happens is for site amenities, someone from the planning office will go out with a building official and review those. So let's say it could be fencing, for instance, that, that's another amenity that we look at. Landscaping in particular is done by a professional landscape architect.
So when they get a temporary CVO, what, what, what parts are allowed to exist that have not been completed? Like if they were going to put a planter box and they didn't do that yet, but everything else essentially is done, I'm thinking of some restaurant. That would, they would still get the temp CVO? Okay, and then.
Yes, they can get a temporary CVO with, with a laundry list of outstanding conditions.
And then when they complete those, they get the permanent CVO?
Is there a time limit on how long they can have that temporary CVO?
There is, and there are regular, to extend the temporary certificate of occupancy costs money. So it's in the developer's interest to complete it within that window. Otherwise, they're going to just keep paying to extend and extend.
But the retainage is ten percent, right?
The retainage is ten percent for the following year, only for the landscaping to make sure that it survives. That's after they have their final CVO. So let's say that they submit a hundred thousand dollars is their cost estimate for landscaping. That's their performance bond or their cash bond. The landscaping is inspected, everything passes, everything looks healthy and viable. The township would still keep ten thousand for the following year, just to ensure that that landscaping is watered and, you know, properly cared for in the next two seasons.
So right now, we don't have any way to enforce? That's what, that's what we're amending, so there is more enforceable?
In the ordinance, yes.
Okay.
So if someone promised us a gazebo and they don't put the gazebo in currently, what happens?
If there's no performance bond on it, then they are in violation of their site plan, but it really becomes a legal matter because there's no leverage that the township has.
Yeah, that's the problem. That's exactly the problem.
This is not, I should, I should have said this at the beginning. This performance bond and cash bond collection is not unique to Plymouth Township. Most municipalities do this. Novi keeps their, keeps their residual for at least two years, I think, if not longer, to ensure that their landscaping is healthy. So this is not unusual. More of a best practice to ensure that the development, you know, comes to fruition as, as originally approved.
And will this matter be taken up by the Board of Trustees or where does it go from?
It must, yeah. So as a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, the charge for the Planning Commission is to have the public hearing and then make a recommendation of approval or denial to the board. And the final authority rests with the board.
And that's the only substantive change is the, the change on the performance bond?
Correct, yep. Yep, it's pretty, it's pretty cut and dry for, for this amendment.
Seems like it makes a lot of sense to me.
Oh, it does to me too, because, you know, they have to put up with what they said they were going to do, so. The only downside is it increased cost to the developer, but it's nominal. And if it's a practice that's, that is common in other communities, then they're used to pricing that into the cost of their projects.
Exactly. It's a concerted cost of doing business today.
If there are no other comments or concerns, is there a motion to recommend?
Public hearing.
Oh, thank you. So we'll open the public hearing at seven seventeen. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing at seven eighteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend to the Board of Trustees this amendment to Article thirty of the zoning ordinance, this performance guarantee.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Barbarina and supported by Commissioner Idsel to recommend approval of the text amendment, text amendment to the Board of Trustees. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the renovation of the Wendy's facade. Is there any requirements for that?
All right, so thank you all. We have two Wendy's items first. They are separated. The first one is the facade. The second one is the Arc signage, just to clarify. So the Wendy's on Ann Arbor Road is pursuing a facade renovation. This is part of the entire Wendy's brand national remodel. You may have seen the one on Sheldon Road. They just did their facade and, you know, it's brand new. So this Wendy's is proposing essentially the same renovation. They're going to be removing the greenhouse, also called the sunroom, on the front of the building that faces Ann Arbor Road, replacing that space with additional landscaping and adding in some bushes of the same species that already exist. Replacing the metal mansard roof with a corrugated metal siding, so a more modernist look rather than the traditional sloped mansard. Repainting existing railing, doors, and other perimeter features. Installing new aluminum doors and windows, as well as several new light features. And they will retain the existing brick and block components of the facade. We have reviewed this item and find that it meets all of the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Additionally, most notably, landscaping is proposed as an element of this. So as some of you might know, the Arc District has size requirements for landscaping. You know, we require a certain amount of variation within our sizes. As proposed, this site plan is really filling in the gaps where the existing landscaping has died away. As such, they propose uniform plant sizes, but when mixed with the plants that are existing on the site, there will be variation. And it is the opinion of our department that that variation will be sufficient to meet the Arc District requirements. But it is up to you as the commission to determine whether or not you find that equally acceptable. And I believe we have the applicant here today, correct? Come on up.
So what, what kind of motion are you looking for? Because this is site plan amendment approval. So what exactly is the action we're supposed to take?
This is a minor site plan amendment.
Okay.
So because they will be removing a portion of the building footprint, taking off that greenhouse and adding the landscaping, it's sufficient enough for the Planning Commission to make that determination.
And so that's the reason why we didn't get a landscape plan for this?
Yeah, you got a civil plan set.
On one of these?
Mm-hmm, yeah. One of them is the facade and the other one is the civil set, which shows the landscaping.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Did you have comments that you wanted to make?
No, just to tell you that I'm actually the substitute applicant tonight. The applicant Ryan Jones couldn't attend. So my name is Tom Gergich. I'm vice president of the real estate for Team Show Stack Family Restaurants. And we're here tonight hopefully for approval of our plans to remodel our Wendy's on Ann Arbor Road. And I'm here to answer any questions that the board may have.
I just have a suggestion on the landscaping. So when I looked at the planner's report, you know, I looked at the, what are you going to plant, which appear to be really some nice, nice plant stock, except for this Calery pear tree, which is really a Bradford pear. And, you know, those trees are, now have been determined that they're invasive. And if you look, you may not be familiar with this area, but the other commissioners will, should be. Over at Miller Woods, if you look at the mellow, the metal part of Miller Woods, it's close to the corner of Ridge and Powell, you'll see it particularly in the springtime, those Bradford pears, because they flower. And their, their seeds have come over from the surrounding suburbs, because that was a very popular tree. Their lifespan, their lifespan is only twelve to fifteen years. So you're lucky to get twenty years out of them. I had one, lost it at about twenty-five years. And I see multiple places in the township and in Canton where they have a whole roadway filled with it. So I would suggest not planting that kind of pear tree. Select some other kind of plant stock that you would like. I know a lot of people, if you like the flowering stuff, do service berries, which has got a nice flower in the spring, but we'd leave that up to you.
We'll be happy to work with the township planning staff and, and find a substitute tree. We're not married to the Bradford pear by any stretch, so.
Yeah, so many of the subdivisions and things have planted extensively Bradford pears and they're, they're just asking for future disease to wipe them all out.
Understood.
And they do only last about maximum twenty years and they start splitting off.
Yeah. We'll be happy to substitute something else that's perhaps more native.
I'm curious about, are you working, is, is that particular Wendy's a corporate store or is it a franchise store?
No, we're a franchisee of Wendy's and it's a franchise location.
Sochak family runs it, correct?
I'm sorry, sir.
The Sochak family?
Showstack?
Yeah, Team Showstack Family Restaurants is the franchisee.
Right, and do they also own the one on Sheldon Road?
Yes, sir.
What's your timeframe for the construction and the landscaping?
It, we hope, once we get permits, that we'll be able to finish the project this year.
And would the restaurant stay closed during that whole time?
No, the restaurant is scheduled to reopen November first. It has been a challenge. I'm sure you've all heard of the labor shortage that's been going on. It's particularly severe in the fast food industry. And that, this particular location has suffered greatly because of that. But we have a management team in place now. They're going to start training crew people here in the next week or so and our other restaurants. And our goal is to have the restaurant open on November first. And then shortly thereafter, the dining room will close while the renovations are ongoing. Again, we should have everything complete and back to full capacity by the end of the year.
Thank you.
So how many Wendy restaurants are, are you responsible for or that you oversee?
We have fifty-six in Michigan.
And how have you found those labor shortages? Are, I mean, do you see a movement away from what we think is the, the drive-through? Just have strictly drive-through with no dine-in?
It's, it's a complicated issue and we could probably spend a great deal of time here talking about it. But what's happened is the, obviously the pandemic closed dining rooms, so it shifted to a hundred percent drive-through or off-premise dining. A lot of the delivery service providers, such as Uber Eats and DoorDash, you know, people are using those. That trend has basically continued now that the pandemic is over. And it's part of the reason why Wendy's has developed this, they call it an image activation program. It's more designed to serve the drive-through customer and offers some amenities to the delivery service providers. So it, it looks like off-premise dining is here to stay, particularly in the fast food industry. And I think you'll see over the next ten years, more and more fast food restaurants directing their attention to drive-through and delivery services.
And a number of, you know, drive-through restaurants coming online here are redoing and so we're asking that question as, as an educational matter, so we can.
Sure, I'm sorry, could you repeat the question, please?
I said, I asked you the question as an educational to us, because we've had a number of applicants that are involved with drive-ins, drive-throughs, whatever you want to call them, and, and just determine where you, someone like you sees the future going.
Well, you know, currently, up to eighty percent of our business comes through the drive-through window. So it's, it was roughly seventy percent before the pandemic and it's, it obviously has increased and seems to be holding. So, you know, I tell people, our customers vote with their wallets every day. They, they want quick, efficient service where they don't have to leave their vehicles to get their food.
So what's your average wait time?
Just out of curiosity. By location, but, and again, the labor shortage has affected that drastically. About two hundred and fifty seconds right now, which is well above what it was pre-pandemic and well above what, you know, we strive to deliver to our customers. But again, with the challenging labor environment, it's, it's not uncommon for us to have a restaurant that only has five or six employees in it. And, you know, in that case, we can't keep it open for more than eight hours a day. And if one or two of those call off, you know, we're, we're in bad shape as far as customer service goes. So it's been a real challenge.
Have you seen your sales by, you know, the DoorDash people and all that? Has that increased or?
It, obviously it increased during the height of the pandemic. It has tapered off somewhat, but it's still a significant portion of the business. Again, depending on the area and location, it can be anywhere from twelve to twenty percent of the business that we're doing off-premise.
Thank you.
I had a question on the planner's report on page three, section nine. The second sentence talks about the plan also proposes to install a light box along the top of the east riff line. I really believe that is the north riff line. Isn't it the one that faces Ann Arbor Road?
Yes, that was my mistake. Sorry, it was the eastern one on the Sheldon Wendy's, northern one on the Ann Arbor Road.
Okay, so it is north.
Another reference question. When you have your operation doing strictly drive-through and you have these delivery services, do they get to knock on the door and come in to pick up or do they have to wait in line with all the customers?
Most of the drivers will come inside. It just depends on how many cars are in the drive-through. You know, they're, they're not unlike our other customers. They don't want to get out of their car if they don't have to. So if there's only one or two cars in the drive-through, they'll, they'll use that. If, if there's more, they'll come in so that they can get the delivery, delivery full exposure.
Gotcha.
A question. Across the street, I think the Tavoltly.
Across the street, I think the Tavoltly is, is not going to have a drive-through, like you have to order through an app and then you can just pick up your food, but not a standard drive-through lane? Do you see that being something that Wendy's does in the future?
Wendy's already has a mobile app that allows you to online order. You can pick on the app how you want to pick up your food, whether it's your drive-through or come inside. And they are considering to have the employees bring the food out to the cars, you know, to park in a sign space and tax that they're at. And that's probably a year or so down the road. And again, it's because of labor, it's just hard to have it fully available to run food out. And there's also some security issues associated with that at night and in climate weather, you know, people don't, we don't, we don't want our employees going out of building if they don't have it. But I think you'll see it in the next year or so that we'll be able to do the science base and handle it.
Can you go through your timeline once again from landscape till the end of construction on the building?
Well, if we can get our permits in time and weather allows, we're going to try to get the landscaping done yet this year. That'll be, first thing we'll do is remove the greenhouse because that area is going to be landscaped, that must be removed. And hopefully we can get the plants and, you know, we're obviously running out of time. It's already almost late October, but, you know, and actually planting plants at this time of the year, as long as the ground isn't frozen, isn't bad for them. It gives them a chance to kind of settle in and, you know, take advantage of the spring growth, so.
But then you go into, you say November 1, you open again. And then you'll start your construction, assuming everything gets approved shortly.
As soon as we get construction permits, we already have, you know, the plans are already done, subject to your approval this evening. It's already in the hands of our contractors to get bids. We're trying to get everything lined up, so as soon as we receive permits, we can get started and get it done. We've committed to Wendy's that we'll get this project done this year and that's our intention.
So you'll close down again when you start breaking down or demolishing that front greenhouse?
I'm sorry.
You'll, you'll have to close down again when you demolish the, the greenhouse out front?
Just the dining room. The drive-throughs stay open. We try to keep the restaurants open as much as possible and the construction is designed and phased so that the dining room is closed for the minimal amount of time.
Okay.
Other questions or comments, concerns? And we're comfortable with the landscaping, the sizing for the, for the ARC district?
It's fine.
I would suggest the motion would just say not to plant the pear, you know, some other planting material.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve PC 2454, the Wendy facade, Wendy's facade subject to the findings of the McKenna report, and that the uniformity of plant size is acceptable, given the variety that will be sustained when the new plantings are integrated with the existing plantings, but that there's also an alternative to the Bradford pear.
Support.
Okay, moved by Commissioner, Commissioner Barberina and support by Commissioner Boyd to approve the site plan amendment, subject to set conditions. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, you're welcome. And now we go to the sign. Are you here for the sign as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're ready to hear about the sign from the planners.
All right. So today Wendy's is proposing two signs in their sign package. One is a menu board or what is called a pre-sale sign. You've seen these on several other developments along Ann Arbor Road over this past year, as well as one wall sign. So today, the Wendy's does not have a wall sign on the front as it has that sloped, mansard roof. This wall sign would be placed on the new flat facade along the north side of the building. The wall sign, as proposed, currently measures at a height of 18 inches and a width of 64 and 1/4 inches. However, the wall sign is done in a stylized script font that has an arching fashion to it, which means that each individual letter does not stand 18 inches tall. Really, the, you know, every letter is shorter than 18 inches. The logo of the Wendy's head figurine is what measures up to a full 18 inches. As such, our department is recommending approval of the wall sign as presented, finding that the lettering, individual lettering meets the requirement of the 16 inches for the ARC district. We are also recommending approval of the drive-through menu board sign as it meets all of the requirements for location, purpose, placement, hazards, and volume. So they provided a photometric plan to demonstrate that the menu board sign does not create, you know, light pollution or hazards for nearby properties, just as has been done for every other drive-through we've seen this year. And we find that it meets all those requirements. So today, the planning commission must deliberate on whether the proposed height for the sign is acceptable for the wall sign and whether or not the total height of 18 inches meets or does not meet the intention of the ARC district.
Okay.
All right.
I've got a couple of questions, Anana.
Sure.
So on page three of the McKenna report that shows the new facade, we assume that's what you're talking about as far as the actual picture of it?
So the, you mean page three of the facade report?
Of the construction report.
Yes, that is what the facade will look like.
Sign as well?
No, that sign is of a larger size. That's the sign on Sheldon Road, which is permitted at a larger size than is in the ARC district.
What are you talking about? The one from the previous application.
All right, I'll, I'm at report. So it'll be similar and scale a bit smaller?
Yes, the exact same proportions and design, just smaller.
What about the pole, existing pole sign?
That is a separate matter that Wendy's will bring to you at a later date.
Going to remain up?
As it currently stands, yes. No modifications are proposed.
Did you have an issue with that or a concern?
No, I was just curious with the ARC, how that, when you start changing signs, does that have to be addressed? The pole sign?
Unless a modification to the pole is proposed, it may remain.
Okay.
However, if you see, for example, like carpet, the town center carpet and floors, they had empty pole signs that were really more of a blight. We require those to be removed as a part of their sign package, but this is a functioning, standing pole sign, so.
Got it.
Different scenario.
The, the menu board, it's not clear to me when I look at it. Is it, is it like an LED screen or?
Yes.
Yeah, because I saw LED, but I didn't know if that meant, you know, like a flat-screen TV or if it was lit by LEDs or?
It's basically a flat-screen TV that's designed for outdoor use.
I have a question. Let's see, this item and then the Wendy's facade both have the same PC number?
Yes, they were submitted under one joint application.
Okay, just wanted to be sure, thank you.
And any future signage will be under a separate, separate PC number. So if the pole sign comes forward, that will have its own number.
Okay. So the, the reason why the logo with Wendy on it is larger, is that just because it can't be made any smaller and be recognizable?
In all candiness, you know, a custom sign can be made, but it is roughly three to four times the cost. You know, all the brands like Wendy's have a standard sign package and national vendors that provide those. We've chosen the smallest possible sign that's available that, you know, we feel meets the ordinance and the criteria. And the only option is to spend a lot more money to have a custom sign done.
So it's a matter of branding then?
Yes.
Okay.
This, this is a sign that Wendy's requires us to use. And if we, you know, for instance, if you denied that request, then I have to go back to Wendy's and get special dispensation to, to remodel without it, which would likely, well, wouldn't likely, would definitely delay the project until spring at that point.
Can you share the vision on the monument sign in the future?
On the existing?
No, the, you said you were coming back at a later time. So is there a vision as to what the pole sign that becomes a monument sign would look like or what the plan would be?
Well, obviously signage is important to, to all businesses and in particular restaurants. Fast food is kind of an impulse purchase. We are, we are working with Wendy's to ascertain if we, if they will allow us to leave the pole sign untouched. If, if they won't, then we'll be back to work something out with you folks on what type of signage we need.
They may not because the, the font is different on the?
They've, they've changed their logos and that's part of this image activation program that they have. But, you know, this is a problem that is not uncommon across the U.S., where if you touch a sign, you know, it has to be removed. So they're, they're considering, they're, they're in our options here at this point, so I don't have a decision.
So for now, it remains like that?
Yes, sir.
Any other concerns or questions? Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve PC 2454, the Wendy's ARC signage as submitted.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner Pastel to approve application 2454, the Wendy's sign. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Next is the application 2455, the Raj Palace signage. So who takes this one?
Me.
Okay.
I'm all the signs today.
Okay, good.
Looks like we don't have the applicant here today, so unfortunately you have no one to ask questions of, but I'm happy to answer as many as I can. This proposed signage is for the, the strip mall at the corner of Sheldon and Ann Arbor Road on the northwest corner. This is one of several tenants in that building that is applying for a sign, a new restaurant called Raj Palace. They are proposing one wall sign that spans across a corner between the two facades. Previously, this is how the Shimmy Shack sign in that same tenant space was designed, and they are applying for essentially the same arrangement. So this is a unique situation in general. This sign does not adhere to our typical understanding of percentage of the facade area that is occupied, those sorts of things. So as presented, the tenant is located on a 90-degree corner and the signage is 21 square feet in area. And the planning commission must determine whether the proposed signage is acceptable, given the tenant location on an interior corner. Typically, we don't allow more than one foot of projection from the sign, like from the facade, but this is suspended over the walkway, so the planning commission will need to discuss whether that counts as a projection, since it was found acceptable last time. Is it acceptable once again? Those sorts of considerations. The signage also proposes 16-inch lettering for the top two, the top row, and the planning commission must determine whether that 16-inch lettering is acceptable. And lastly, the sign includes a second line that constitutes a somewhat panel. So in the signage design, you can see that the, what does it say? The Indian Taste Express. The letters of each word are enclosed in what could be considered a panel frame for each individual word. They're not truly standalone letters for that line. Previously, the commission did approve the second line of the Quick Pass Car Wash for a similar scenario, finding that the backing was necessary to improve the legibility of the sign. So the Quick Pass Car Wash one was approved at about, I think the total was eight inches in height for the individual lettering of that second line, whereas the Raj Palace second line is proposed at 10 inches in height. So there's a lot of special considerations for the planning commission to make tonight for this sign. Our department is recommending approval as presented, finding that it adheres to the previous arrangement with the last tenant and generally meets the height, size, and location requirements for the ARC district. And I will leave any questions and discussions up to the commission.
So it goes next to the corner in this corner, right?
Yes, that's exactly where it goes.
It goes across. Yeah, there's a picture of it with the, I, I just have one quick question. So on the, on the photo here, you show that it was 21, it's 21 square feet.
Yep.
What was it for the Shimmy Shack?
Unfortunately, Shimmy Shack did not ever specify the width of their sign when it was approved, but theirs was also 16 inches in height.
Okay, so it's a similar size?
Yes, almost exactly the same with the addition of the second line, which Shimmy Shack did not have.
Right, right.
So is this a, is this a chain?
I do not know.
And is this the color that the letters are going to be on the picture here or is it underneath where they're?
The color would be red for the primary line and green and white for the secondary line. The black you're seeing on the photo is just a printing error.
Oh, okay, because, yeah.
So why isn't the applicant here, you know?
I do not know.
Can you repeat that again? So the letters, the name of the restaurant is all in red?
Yes.
And the, and the panel part of the sign is what color?
Green with white letters. I was clarifying for Gail since there was a printing error, so someone looked.
Yeah, I got that part, I just didn't get the part about the colors. I got confused with the panel.
So is it the same location as the existing sign?
There is no existing sign.
Is it where it was?
Yes, it will be attached to the same points on the facade.
Okay, same points.
The same mounting points.
Okay.
So I have to say that I never, I mean, I wasn't on the planning commission when you approved it before, but I never liked the way it looked. It looked really out of place. I go to that CVS all the time. It's on my way home. It just looked, it looked funny. I don't, in, in the, in that, stretched across that corner there, it looked, I don't know.
It does, but then what, what could we do? I mean, we don't want to prevent that business. That particular location has had a lot of turnover and it's just, the location is a problem one.
Because there's not a lot of, enough space really on one.
I completely agree, Dennis. I mean, had some experience in this part of the business world before I moved on to my career. I can tell you this is a really problematic location, being tucked in there. And I, I would lean toward doing anything we can do to make that a more successful enterprise. So I would, I would be in favor of making a compromise in this.
Did that previous sign come before the planning commission?
Yes.
I don't remember that.
Yeah.
It did, because it was, I remember the discussion. It was a tough, I think, decision to come to too, because we haven't approved anything like that elsewhere.
Same, same.
But there's space to actually have a sign there. And the one facade next to the cleaner is really small.
So this sign's going to have like a backing and a, it could?
It would be on a bar.
Yeah, it would be on a, I'm sorry.
It would have a bar behind it, but not a full panel.
It sounds like there'll be a light box effect, electric on it too?
Yeah, it would be internally illuminated letters.
Right.
I like it better if it didn't have the second line. I think the second line really clutters it up.
I think so too, and I think then every place, Fantastic Sam's could say, okay, I want to have, I do haircuts.
Right.
Every place right down there could have a secondary line kind of explaining what they do.
I think it looks, would look a lot cleaner. That's why I asked if it was a, if it was a franchise or a chain, if that was their tagline on everything and how they always, how they always branded, but you, you don't, you said you didn't know that.
We do not know. And you are free to table this till next month if you would like to wait for the applicant to answer questions.
I, that's what I would be in favor of.
Yeah, I'd be a lot more comfortable.
Me too. I think the second line, and since there was a question about whether it not constituted a panel and things, is, is really irrelevant and it's, it's advertising. And it's, it doesn't really identify much of anything until you're standing or actually going in it.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't really add, uh, I think it's obvious to most folks. It's going to be an, an Indian restaurant. Shimmy Shack didn't say, you know, what they were. They were kind of a unique restaurant. And they could have asked for the same thing. Because that is sort of, you, I mean, he knew what was in there actually. So this is more straightforward what it is. I think tabling it would be the best, especially when the applicant isn't here.
Right. All right, so we'll communicate to the applicant that the second line is not desirable. Any other information we would like to explicitly communicate to them?
Yeah, tell them that we prefer that they come to the meeting when they're.
Can do.
So should we table until next month's meeting? Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Sure, great.
Uh, that we table, um, uh, what's the number? Uh, PC two, four, five, five, the Raj Palace Arc signage until next month.
Do you wanna do thirty days or sixty days or ninety days? What do you?
Yes.
That's a good question. How much time do we wanna give them?
Uh, sixty days maybe?
Sixty days.
That gives them the next two meetings, just to be on the safe side. Yeah, they could come to either one.
I, I would amend that to be then to, um, that we table, um, application PC two, four, five, five, Raj Palace Arc signage, uh, for sixty days.
Second.
That was, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, move by Commissioner Griger and supported by Commissioner Isel to table application twenty-four fifty-five for up to sixty days. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. Next is, uh, monthly report. I have a couple of questions. On the, uh, second page, application twenty-four, twenty-five, the Taco Bell expansion. Which Taco Bell is it?
Um, that is the one on Ann Arbor Road.
The one on Ann Arbor Road?
Yes, we'll, we'll add the address. We haven't heard from them in, in quite a while. Um, you know, technically they still have, they have a year window in which Teresa met. So it may be a moot point, but.
Okay. And then the, the next one was, um, this, um, application twenty-four fifty-three, the Ridge Five Industry. It says that they were going to be at our meeting today. Is they just, they just asked for the land?
They have withdrawn their application as of last week.
Oh, okay, so they're, they're not coming before us at all?
No, the site is under a new purchase agreement.
Okay. On, um, page three, under the St. John's Resort, the amendment number one, uh, the expansion of the ballroom. So they're adding on to one of the existing ballrooms? Am I reading that right? This is ballroom addition, addition. Is that expanding it or is it a new one?
Yeah, so, um, in the, the southern Y-shaped building, they're enclosing the area in between those two wings, those two Y wings.
Oh, okay.
For additional ballroom space and, um, interior renovations.
So it's back on the Y-shaped ones?
Mm-hmm, yes, within, within, uh, the two wings.
It's not the area between, next to where it once was a convent, but now it's like the grill for the golf course? That's the area I'm concerned, I have a question I'm a little concerned about.
I don't believe so, but, um, if we could pull up an aerial perhaps of the, of the resort.
I'm asking because that's where the, uh, Harducci sculptures are along that wall. I mentioned it to them when they were here.
I don't believe that that's being impacted.
Oh, okay, that, that's my only concern. What, what do you wanna look at in the property? The actual building. The hotel? Uh, not the hotel so much as the old seminary. I think you're gonna have to look at an aerial.
Yeah, can we?
Cause it's too, I don't think Google would have gone in there.
If you can just zoom in.
There you go.
Yeah, so it's this right here, in here. That's what they're enclosing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm orienting myself.
Is that different than what we had seen in the past?
Yep.
Okay, so this is something we've already looked at.
We, we approved this, right?
Yes, the, this enclosure was approved. And then here in this parking lot is where that new five thousand square foot outdoor.
Yeah, I've driven in there and looked at it.
But this is being closed in.
Oh, okay, yeah, I don't, that's not where it is. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have a question, Laura. Uh, at a recent meeting, I, I think it was a board of trustees meeting, but, um, Mr. Gonzalez was talking about with the, uh, the eight home development, the old Carl Purcell property, that they were considering resubmitting a new plan or something like that. Did you hear him say that or is there such a thought out there?
Um, I haven't heard that.
Oh, I have to take that back. That was for the property on Beck Road across the golf course. Brona Park that they were.
But that's.
Yeah, Brona Park is.
Is Neil involved in that?
No, he's not. I have, I don't know. But Brona Park is considering restructuring the whole arrangement or something, right?
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't had a lot of success, as you can tell.
I think Supervisor Heisey mentioned that at, uh, the HOA meeting. For the HOA that's adjacent to Brona Park recently. Uh, but they haven't formally submitted anything yet.
Edinburgh Estates are, yeah.
Uh, Heather Hills.
Or Heather Hills, Heather Hills.
And from your understanding, is the Baleski Funeral Home, is it still going to move forward? Or are they re, are they reevaluating?
Um, that's our understanding.
That they're reevaluating or they're moving forward?
Oh, that they're, that they're still moving forward, but still working with Wayne County and some engineering.
Any other questions? And we'll move on to the, um, parking ordinance discussion.
All right. Well, I'm pretty excited about this item because it's something I'm totally geeked up about. But this had come before you about, I think, four months ago and it got deferred. But now we are back to talking about parking. So the township's parking ordinance or the chapter of the zoning ordinance regarding parking has not been updated since two thousand and four. And upon reviewing our current parking standards against both national standards and those of nearby municipalities, which we have Canton here, but also Nova and Livonia and other ones like that, we have found that Plymouth Township is requiring developers to build twenty-five to thirty percent more parking than is necessary, meaning that is ever used or even in demand on the most maximum parking occupation days. These parking spaces have lots of unintended consequences. They increase the cost for businesses and developers. They also, uh, increase the amount of stormwater runoff, which, you know, even though Wayne County manages stormwater, our residents pay taxes for stormwater just like anywhere else. And that increased maintenance does pass the cost on to the residents. And additionally, the same thing, Wayne County maintains our roadways, but residents again pay those taxes and are the ones actually fronting the cost. And this parking can increase damage to roadways through flooding. Uh, it also equates to a loss of green space. So the more parking we require, the less landscaping can go into every site. And overall, these unintended consequences are all at a cost to the aesthetics and taxable value of the township. So going into these a little bit more, uh, I have on the second page, the benefits of a parking update, AKA the current cost of the parking system. The first one is new business through reoccupancy. So the reason we initiated this discussion is because of the planning department. We often get calls from people that want to reoccupy existing buildings. Most notably, usually small offices, you know, law firms, dental offices, small healthcare, uh, things that don't take up a lot of space. And oftentimes we have to turn them away for having insufficient parking on a site for what their use requires. And it's not that there is not sufficient parking based on demand, it's based on our ordinance. And as such, there are businesses that were previously going to be located in Plymouth Township that had to find other locations. And we're trying to change our approach that we're not pushing business out of the township just by our parking constraints. The second one is the cost of construction. So as previously mentioned by Tom and anywhere else, the cost of construction is very high during the pandemic. But even pre-pandemic, a surface parking space costs about five thousand dollars to construct, whereas landscaping the same area costs about four thousand dollars. So when compounding that, you know, over hundreds or even dozens of parking spaces, it makes a large financial difference to a developer. Next one is green space. So when it's discussed often that, you know, if we take away parking, our building's going to get bigger. And the answer is not necessarily. We have setback requirements and lot coverage requirements that restrict the size of the buildings in the township. So really, reducing parking would translate into more green space rather than giant buildings. This is a concern that's often more discussed in high-density downtown areas where building coverages are really, really high and building heights are, you know, ten stories plus. But it's something that still matters in the township, you know, creating the character that township residents know, expect, and enjoy. As I had mentioned, lower infrastructure costs and taxes. So less consequences from runoff means less cost on infrastructure and the taxpayers. And then finally, uh, more choice in the market. So today, developers have to build to our standards. And we wanna give them the option to build the amount of parking that's actually needed for them, that they need based on their own market research. We'll still require a minimum, you know, something to make sure you're not just putting no parking in and building a stadium and pushing all that on to everyone else. But we want to give developers the freedom and flexibility to actually understand their own clientele, their own employees, and build the parking that's right for them. So that's a quick overview of that. So in this parking update that we would be discussing today, what would be included? One would be changing our parking minimums. So right now, our minimums are just out of date. As I had mentioned, they're from two thousand and four. Every single year, there are new engineering calculations published for what parking minimums should be. So we would be updating our parking minimums to the most recent, um, edition of the Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation Manual. This was released, gosh, I think twenty twenty is the most current one. And we would be updating all of our parking values to reflect those standards. And we'd also be double-checking those against our neighboring communities to make sure that we're getting it approximate for our area. The next one would be accommodating emerging parking needs. So right now, there's a lot of different things happening as businesses move to drive-through, to pickup, to all these different styles of development. And the Plymouth Township ordinance doesn't have any considerations for time-limited parking. So if someone wants to do curbside service, we just have to tell them either yes or no, or we don't really know, but we have no basis for why. We have no basis for how many time-limited spaces can you have, right? It's a discretionary decision right now. And we wanna add those standards to make sure that we're being consistent across all developments. The last one, or so the last one on page three is improving shared driveway access management. So along Ann Arbor Road, we have pretty good driveway access management, but we just wanna make sure that it's qualified into the ordinance so that we're not creating unnecessary, basically driveways and curb cuts and creating that sticky traffic flow if we can avoid it. On page four, another item we would be adding to this ordinance for, you know, that is before you to discuss today. We haven't decided what we're adding. We're talking about it today, is shared parking. So the township does not currently provide for parking between mixed uses. So if you have a, say, an, an office and commercial mixed-use strip mall, the township says right now, okay, all you businesses add up what your parking is and that's what we're gonna share. That's the total you have to provide is the, you know, addition of every single one of your parking requirements. However, there are some uses that operate at different times of day. So if you have a, a shipping business that primarily operates at night, paired in the same parking area as a office that operates during the day, shared parking would allow them to use the same parking spaces at different peak times of the day instead of having to build the total of everything that's required for both of them. Um, so shared parking requires that developers prove to us that their uses are indeed peaked at different times of the day so that they're not compounding on top of each other. And it's pretty typical for communities to include some sort of provision for shared parking. So we're looking at including that.
I stop you there.
Yeah.
I, I know what you're saying there and I can see the benefit. But that's also the assumption that those original businesses will remain doing what they originally were intended to do.
And very often, they don't know who their tenants are gonna be. And you can get into a situation like at, uh, Five Mile and Sheldon Road or, uh.
All the restaurants.
Between Beck. And they're, because they don't know, so they could wind up with all restaurants. And so there has to be some, uh, some restriction on, on the type of, of restaurant because, and it can change.
Mm-hmm. So just like today, if a business changes from a, an office to a restaurant, they have to update their parking. So say a restaurant requires more than an office building, that site would have to build more parking as our ordinance stands today to accommodate that new use. This would not remove that requirement.
How about the decision where, uh, a developer has no clue as to who he's gonna, uh, lease it out to? And whether it's gonna be, uh, a compatible use with different times of the day or a consistent use?
Then they wouldn't be allowed to do a shared parking agreement. It has to be for a tenant that we know is going to occupy the space. It can't be for spec buildings.
So on the, um, on the, uh, the five-minute limit issue, I think everybody knows that it's common in other states to see that kind of parking arrangement, particularly at retail establishments. But do you know with certainty? Cause I, I've never seen it. I guess, I don't know if I should say never. Um, in the city of Plymouth where they have fifteen-minute parking spaces, can they, could they write a ticket for exceeding that parking?
This isn't on the street. This would be in front of the business.
In front of the building. So what if somebody just parks there?
Then it's up to the business to enforce.
It's up to the business, so it's really just, um, voluntary.
Yep.
Yeah.
So the business would have to have it posted that they tow violators?
Yep.
And then they could, cause I believe that you have to have it posted or you can't tow.
So for example, the Starbucks on Beck Road has requested several of these five-minute limit signs, but we don't have standards for those. You know, how many can you have?
But why would there be a township ordinance if it's not enforceable by the township? I don't, I didn't follow that.
Um, it's similar to saying how many compact spaces you can have, for example.
So it wouldn't be an ordinance that prohibited parking beyond a cer, it's not like you parked in handicap parking. It's not the, it's not the same.
No, it's not the same. It'd really be for the commission to discuss, would we allow a developer to make all of their spaces five-minute time-limited?
Yeah, but then again, it's only, only if people voluntarily comply. And they're, you know, it's bad for businesses to start towing your customers that stayed five minutes too late. Okay, thanks. I, I was curious about that, cause in other states, you know, they can write tickets. Like in California, they're, they're, these spaces are common and they, they'll ticket you if you exceed the.
But do they have to chalk your tires so that they know that you've been?
I don't know how they enforce it, but I know they do enforce it.
It's, it's different if it's on, on street as opposed to on private property.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it would be, you're right.
And this could be.
But no, I, only to an extent, because handicap parking is not.
You still, the police won't do it. You have to do, at, so at Park, we had, we have, um, handicap parking and we have a loading zone and for fifteen-minute parking. But the police won't do anything about it because it's private property, no.
Wow.
For the handicapped people.
So, yeah, but we will, Bob, we'll tell you. As long, so as, cause we ju, actually, we just had this situation come up about two weeks ago where we had three events going on at the same time and there were people parked illegally along the tennis courts and blocking in other park. People couldn't leave, they were parked in. And, um, we called the city police and they said, no, it's private property. We have no jurisdiction. If you have to have it posted that, you know, pr, you know, private property, parking enforcements in effect, violators will be towed and the name of the towing company.
Wow.
So.
So the police can only do the handicapped, um, if it was like on a street.
On the street, yeah.
I'm surprised.
I never knew that.
Cause that's. Cause that's a state law.
Never knew that.
Yep, private. So yeah, the commission wouldn't be involved in the enforcement of these at all. Really the question before you is, how? How much of this time-limited parking would we allow on a development, you know? Because the commission does have purview over signage. That's something we all have input on. You know, signage goes everywhere on every single development, enter, exit, all that stuff. And in some cases, perhaps allowing five-minute limits on every parking space is acceptable, but in other cases, perhaps not. Right now, we just don't have any sort of. Or even just a, a, you know, a section of the ordinance that says time-limited spaces shall be up to the discretion of the commission, something like that. But right now we have nothing.
And that could be a lot of signs too, if you take, say, take Starbucks. And every spot is five minutes and every spot has an individual sign that says five minutes. I mean, that's gonna make an impact on the, how that entire site looks. So I think it would be good to do, to address.
I still don't think you answered my question. You have a, a site plan review. And there's parking considerations. And yet they don't know who's gonna occupy. The, uh, the building or buildings. And i- if it was all restaurants, it'd be a problem. But yet, how does, yeah, I, I just have to understand how, how you account for that.
She said you can't do it on spec, only on, only if you have firm tenants.
For the shared parking.
For the shared parking, you can't do it on, we're guessing we're gonna have.
Right. So like, take, take a strip mall like where Bush's is on Sheldon Road. I mean, there's been a lot of turnover in those other. In those other um spaces. And there's, you know, hair salons, restaurants, a massage place, a different, so how did they know?
Cause they're all retail.
So is it, so is it all considered retail and there's nothing, there's not a difference in parking for a restaurant than for a tanning place?
So our ordinance is not specific enough for something like a tanning place. We don't have that level of granularity.
So it would just be retail then?
We do differ between some types of retail.
Okay.
But if you take that example, what I'm curious about is whether you have any examples where. There's more parking than is ever needed because of the parking re- um, the parking uh. Sizing rules. So that strip mall might be an example and I, I'm just gonna. Talk off the top of my head. I could be full of that, but it doesn't seem like that parking lot is ever full.
Yeah, parking calculations are typically based off the square footage of the building combined with what the use is. So that's how it's usually calculated. So it'd be, you know, say you have a mixed office and restaurant. It would be three hundred and, or three hundred and sixty thousand square feet of office, five hundred thousand square feet of restaurant. You'd calculate the parking requirements for each, combine them, and that's what your parking requirement is.
Well, we don't have this in Plymouth necessarily, but I have read like some of the malls that are in trouble now, the big malls. You know, they know that those retail businesses are not coming back. So they're repurposing it for a variety of different reasons that are not retail. And they are repurposing the parking lots. They're making them smaller and they're putting apartment buildings or something else, drive-throughs or whatever it is.
Outbuildings?
Uh, yeah, the outbuildings. They're converting a lot of the parking to outlots.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's a tough call because it's predicting the future. Um. And, you know, I think everybody would agree with the thought that um. You want to have the right amount, whatever the magic amount is, but certainly you want to have massive parking lots in places that are just wasting the space.
And if there's ever insufficient parking, the township can always fall back on its nuisance ordinance to force developers to build the required amount. So if you are overflowing into areas of the township, you know, parking in adjacent lots, parking on neighboring streets, creating a nuisance because of your business. We can enforce that and require you to build additional parking.
But how can you build additional parking if you were, if your site?
It would have to be off-site parking.
Oh, I see.
I noticed at IKEA across the street, their, the outlot is for sale. That was their surplus parking.
Mm-hmm.
Like their overflow. And I only saw cars in there like the first couple of weeks it was open. Otherwise it's always empty and now it's for sale.
Yep. And this would be bringing the township, like I said, into alignment with current standards, not trying to predict for less in the future. So this would be updating us to what is seen for the national standards and local standards today.
So again, I wonder if, do we have any examples of anything that was built in the last, say, ten years according to those parking calculations? That we would all turn our head to and say, ah, there's, that lot is never full.
I, I can't think of many places in the township where the lot, where I've never been able to find parking.
I can't either.
You're saying in the township you can't find?
No.
Kroger the day before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I was gonna say Kroger the day before. Yeah, I've always been able to find, yeah, Kro- that, that parking lot is sometimes hard to find parking.
But I've never been like, I'm going home.
The only exception I know is the Five Mile um east of Beck. As Keith was saying, lots of restaurants and uh, it's really tight there.
Which, where, there's a Shell station on the corner.
RV's Shell.
Oh, yeah. Oh, where that red, that red olive is there?
When they came in for a site plan, didn't know who their tenants were gonna be. Didn't know what kind of businesses they were gonna be, just generalized. Things, and as it turned out, they were almost all restaurants. Which makes it very tight. And you still need to have some provision for, uh, because you're relaxing. The parking requirements. And it's one thing if, if the parking requirements are pretty large. And uh, no matter what they do, i- it's uh, gonna be covered. But when you re- lower them down, then you could have a problem.
So I don't think of this as lowering. This is right sizing it. So this is still setting it to the maximum observed. But the maximum observed in twenty twenty rather than two thousand and four. Does that make sense?
Yeah. The site that Keith's citing is actually three developers. And I know Jim Anowitz worked long and hard trying to get agreement to have some kind of shared parking situation there. And does Northridge Church still bus some of their congregation in from outside? So there is a place, there's not enough parking.
Oh, and they used to pre-pandemic. Have you seen buses lately?
I haven't, but I haven't been.
I, I don't think, I don't think they're doing that right now.
I haven't, I, I haven't seen the buses running.
And I, I don't know about the ice arena.
Uh, they've got, I don't think they have, do they ever fill?
I don't think so.
The USA Hockey.
Uh, no, they got the, they got the wackiest uh, parking.
I know.
It's wacky.
Although, I mean, stormwater runoff is a real problem and having more green space is desirable. I think. Most people would agree with that.
And I, and since you raised that issue up, uh, because I have some other thoughts, but I don't want to get into all of that. But since we're getting into, into that, I think there should be, if they, if they're going to, you talked in your report. About they're getting credits, you know, they can have some reduction. I think if they have some kind of a rain garden type of thing, a runoff like Bosch has done. Park has hit some of that. Comcast, the Comcast also has that.
And the new Henry Ford has the bio swales.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I think they should be getting, um, you know, some kind of credit, if you will, some incentive. Uh, that would enable them to, to do that. Because if our goal is, and I think it is, right to be more environmentally conscious. What a better way to do it. And then you try to alleviate some of the, um, you know, the surge problems.
The, the rain gardens almost double the cost of, mm-hmm. But that, but that was a, the rain gardens were covered by a grant, at Park were covered by a grant from Eagle.
Looks very nice.
Yeah, yeah. We can handle two hundred and fifty thousand gallons of stormwater in a single episode. So.
Does it require a lot of maintenance?
The first three years, they require, they require a lot of maintenance.
And then it's sort of just.
And then it's, yeah, but then it's pretty much built in and. Park, uh, snow plowing companies hate them. Just, just saying. But most of the snow maintenance companies have moved away from the big trucks and they use the smaller Bobcats. Um, so they can kind of zip around and it's much more, it's much more efficient to push snow that way.
So they are not permitted to put snow, stored snow on, okay.
No, because of the salt and other stuff, so.
Well, yeah, they could take it out easily.
Yeah.
Yeah, too much salt in the stormwater runoff will kill the plantings inside a rain garden, so.
On the economy, accommodating emerging parking needs. Um, could we include in there too the curbside pickups like you see at Kroger where there's six or eight prime spots that they use for people? That are picking up their groceries? Cause I've seen that too.
That no one's ever in.
That no one's ever in as you walk six times as far to get a, to go into the store. But that's beside the point. But that as well, like, um, those types of spots, at least to have it in there addressed in case someone wants to. Have that. And as they're talking about having more, like Wendy's was talking about having designated spots for curbside pickup. So maybe since we're doing this to address it at this time.
Yeah, that would be appropriate under this overarching category.
Um, you didn't get to the last paragraph on page four, but um. Got a couple of concerns there. If, if we were just suggesting that we would um incentivize EV bicycle parking. From where we are right now, we'd certainly agree to that. But when you're doing that on top of this reduction. Um, the reality is in, in, in Michigan, there are times of the year you just can't ride a bicycle. Uh, this is not Portland, Oregon, and it's just, believe me, I did it when I was in junior high in Ann Arbor and I wouldn't wish that anybody. It's just not realistic. So you cannot realistically. Add in bicycle spaces but take away car spaces because there will be times of the year that you still have to use a car. Likewise, on the um, uh, charging stations, again, that's all excellent suggestions. But we're not gonna have less cars just because some of them are electric and others are not electric. So I think we need to think carefully through this paragraph. Um, in addition to what everything else you're recommending, which I do think makes a lot of sense. I think these two recommendations are um, perhaps not as realistic as I would like to see.
But the bicycle parking wouldn't necessarily have to be in a car parking space. It could be on the sidewalk or.
No, no, what this says is.
It can reduce up to fifteen percent.
Yeah.
And that was a sample number. I'm not actually suggesting that fifteen percent be the final number. That was, again, just as an example.
But you're suggesting an offset.
Yeah, something small. In other communities, five percent is standard or a community will say.
I see what you're saying.
Across all the different reductions available to you, you can only reduce up to, say, ten percent of your parking. But that is the maximum reduction, whether you do EV, bicycle, a combo, some other incentive. Like communities typically cap what the maximum reduction is and allow the planning commission to make that.
But I, I think Tim's got a valid point.
I misunderstood your point, Tim.
Yeah, we're not a, really a, we're not a, like an urban bicycling community. I, I'm not, I, I mean. I would support it, however, it's just, we're just not designed that way. You know, nine months out of the, you know.
I still have my bike out. I'll probably go this weekend. It's seventy.
Yeah.
But yeah, you're right. Um, also, uh, motorcycle parking. I do see like Lifetime Fitness has designated motorcycle parking spots. They're smaller. Instead of taking up an entire parking spot for one motorcycle, they can get three in there.
I think.
Spot for one car or three bikes or two bikes and a half a car.
Or a smart car. We could also give, um, as a component of this, developers' flexibility to, say, convert a car space to a bicycle rack. Things like that, that allow more flexible infrastructure. So you may have seen the ones on the street in downtown Plymouth where they like literally put it in a car space and it adds six bicycle parking spaces.
Yeah, but I would argue that Plymouth's different because most of the people that are bicycling live. In this, or, you know, town setting and more and more suburban.
I just mean, we should think about what options we want to give available to developers. Not that we necessarily are requiring them, but what do we want to make available?
It's more of a town that you would bike around.
Well, it's a lot smaller geographically.
And, well, it's. The speed limits are a lot lower.
Yeah, that too.
They, they do have the designated bike lanes in parts of it too. That I've never actually seen anyone in, but they have them.
It is primarily a residential town with a s- you know, a city center. So they don't have to worry about traveling down a street like Ann Arbor Road.
Right.
But I like the idea of having all these options in there if someone wanted to pursue them.
And then, I raise the same point that I raised when we had an earlier discussion on this, and that is the size of the parking spaces. I think we need a discussion about those. And you say in your report about having, you know, small car parking. You know, they had that when they redid the Krogers and it just didn't work. I mean, I saw big SUVs parking in compact. That just is not going away. Based on what we were talking about earlier about, you know, handicapped and private property and public property and all that. You know, it's not really enforceable. So I think we need to look at the size of the parking spots. And I used as a, as an example, that parking lot in the city of Plymouth. That's right next to Simply Fresh and the Little Dollhouse. If you try to go through that parking lot, that's what's gonna happen.
If there's an F-150 parked in there?
Yes, you forget, with, with a big hitch.
Yeah, well, yeah.
You have to have a smart car to get through there.
Yeah. So we don't, we don't want, we don't want that kind of situation. And I, I was curious about the statement that you made about the small cars. And, you know, in twenty twenty-two, year-to-date, uh, small car sales amounted to six point seven percent of total car sales. Last year was eight point two. So people are not buying the small cars. And you can see that what's being offered to the public.
You're exactly right that it's um, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, small cars were a major part of the auto industry. Right now, it's a fraction.
They've gotten rid of a lot of them, haven't they?
People are buying SUVs and crossovers because they're a lot more functional for the family needs and the family units. And I just don't see that changing, so.
Okay, but we want to add in motorcycles to this section.
Oh, I think that's a great idea.
motorcycles is fine.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. So we'll strike out compact as the to-do and add in motorcycle to consider.
And this little matrix, um, you know, where you have, and I raised this up earlier too, you got the tennis courts and the bowling alley and. And the furniture store, while we have one bowling alley in Plymouth. It would be more useful to me to see some examples of, of businesses that we have in Plymouth. So I can see what the impact is because tennis courts and furniture mean nothing.
We actually don't have ten, we don't think we have any tennis courts in Plymouth Township.
No.
None?
I, dead or public.
Or furniture store.
You're probably right. We had, well, no, that was in the city.
Yeah, you're probably right.
Furniture store.
It's about that today.
Over there where.
Oh, yeah. Walker, Rosenberg.
Yeah, so if you could in- include like restaurants or.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, you could find some areas.
In the ordinance update, it would include every single land use that we currently have. So these three were taken from our current ordinance that we have standards for, even though they don't exist yet.
Okay.
So you want to set the parking standards for land uses that you don't have yet, right? Still in anticipation of them coming.
Right, if we get tennis courts.
Right. But it's still good to see what we have right now so we can evaluate. We can visualize, for me anyway, you can visualize what does this mean, you know? Now we require twenty. Now I mean, we're only gonna require fifteen. Well, you know, that might be, might be enough.
Yeah, and we would show both in the final table.
So is there any, is there any action required of us tonight?
So what, what, are you just taking notes to, to, what would be your next steps?
My next step would actually be to draft the ordinance language, which would then come before you. Probably for a discussion meeting before an actual vote and recommendation meeting. You know, we would discuss it, talk about revisions to the draft, make those revisions, bring it back again. You'd make a recommendation to the board of trustees because it is technically an amendment. And the board would make the final decision. Um, and this would be an amendment to both the parking section and the ARC chapter. Because the ARC chapter has its own parking subsection. So it would be amendments to two different chapters of the zoning ordinance. Um, but yeah, so just to confirm, the notes I have today are examples from different local land uses. Six to eight, you know, adding pickup spots in addition to time-limited parking. More investigation into shared parking for speculative buildings to help answer your question, Keith. Um, then adding motorcycle parking, removing compact space considerations. And rethinking the bike and EV options available. Is that correct?
And the size of the spaces.
Yes.
You know, what are they now and what would be proposed?
Yeah, so um, similarly, if we added extra-large spaces, there'd be no way to enforce that smaller cars don't park in them. So um, I think the best course of action would be to evaluate. Uh, the number of van accessible spaces that we have to provide ADA spaces.
Yeah, that's another thing, you know, I see those on the handicap, you know, it says van accessible, so if you don't have a van, are they permitted to park there?
If you have a handicap license plate, yes.
Even though it's not a van.
Mm-hmm, if you break your leg and get a temporary handicap plate for a sedan.
Yeah.
You can still park in a handicap spot.
That says van accessible.
Well, what makes that really useful is if you uh have a wheelchair in your trunk, for instance. You have to come around to the passenger side, you've got that room to wheel a wheelchair there, open the door and do the transfer. So uh it does things other than just uh accommodates ramps.
Yeah, I watched a lady on my, I had an officer overlook the parking lot. She was confined to a wheelchair and it was amazing to me how she reached back there and unfolded the thing and. She really had to open that that door and in blizzard weather, it was, couldn't believe it. I think you've got it unless somebody else has more ideas or.
Yeah, looks good.
Yeah, if we could just get the draft like at least a week in advance.
Oh, absolutely.
Before the time that we talk about it, that would be great.
Yeah, and I think it would be wise to do a session where we just go through this draft because it will be very long. It's a long chapter and we won't want to, you know, load up an agenda too much with something like this.
Do you suggest we individually look at this part of the ordinance about parking to get familiar with it?
If you would like to, but I will provide you with a comparison between the existing and proposed.
That'd be really helpful.
So you don't have to find the difference or hunt down, you know, where's Waldo it or anything.
Oh, good.
All right, are we done with parking?
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on this.
And then we have the meeting dates. Now, unless I was looking at the wrong calendar, I don't think these dates are correct. As I looked and January eighteenth, Wednesday is in two twenty-three is on the seventeenth.
No, I think Monday's the sixteenth.
Well, you can look at your. January eighteenth is the third Thursday or third Wednesday of the month.
Yeah, for twenty twenty three.
Monday is Martin Luther King Day.
Yeah, it's a Wednesday.
Let me look. Yeah, I guess I stand corrected then. I must have been looking, I must have been looking at the wrong year, but I was double checking that.
Your your phone is lying to you. Mine does that all the time.
Mine too.
Especially about the weather.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, and I appreciate you putting down all these uh, you know, primarily religious uh observations because that's always been an issue.
I do have a comment about the religious observations, that if you're going to include them, that you also include Eastern Orthodox Christian um holidays. Because like uh in twenty twenty three, Eastern Orthodox Easter is April sixteenth.
Were you planning on putting those observations in the official calendar?
Um, this would be more for um our benefit in understanding if you need to have special meetings, what those dates might be. At the official calendar would match what the supervisor's office puts out for the Board of Trustees and the Zoning Board of Appeals and that.
I know one year we had uh, it was the Jewish High Holy Days and I mean, people didn't want to come to that meeting, so.
Yeah, I see a difference on this one over previous years is that we would be meeting on December twentieth instead of the thirteenth because of Hanukkah. Or.
So are we, and so that is the third Wednesday. That was the other issue I had. We typically meet the second Wednesday in December, so.
Right.
What is that would be.
During Hanukkah.
Oh, is that was that during Hanukkah? Oh, let me see. Oh, yeah, that is Hanukkah. So we're gonna do it on the twentieth then?
That's up, so this is a draft proposal, so it's up to the commission's discretion what you'd like to to select for, you know, we've adjusted November and and December at different years.
Having it on Hanukkah.
I want to be respectful, but I also. The twentieth is pretty tough.
Yeah, and can't go back even.
It's through December.
The sixth.
You could go to the sixth.
We could go to the sixth and just say first Wednesday of that month. Because that doesn't include any of the dates you've listed. And then it wouldn't be December twentieth, which is getting into.
Yeah.
You know, the right before Christmas. I mean, it'd be a tight turnaround for applicants, I think. Um.
But that might make sense. That might make sense.
We, that meeting's canceled anyway.
Yeah.
Is there a trustee meeting on that Tuesday, the nineteenth?
Um, that I'm not sure about. Typically, the the board has one meeting in December. Though, so I would think that they would meet on the the fifth.
You think they would meet when?
On the fifth.
On the fifth?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of doing it on the sixth.
Yeah, that would make sense.
If not the twentieth.
Six, six is okay.
Is the, yeah.
How do peo- how do other people feel?
I would be fine with it, the sixth.
Sixth or the twentieth?
Prefer the sixth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But really, the twentieth is that whole weekend of uh.
Yeah.
I think it's a Monday.
It's a Monday.
Christmas would be Monday, right?
I still can't get, I can't write down these dates.
Yeah, Sunday, Monday, so. And like several years, most years actually, that meeting's canceled anyway. Okay. We need a motion to approve it.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a a motion to approve the uh twenty twenty three meeting dates as submitted with the exception of December sixth?
Mister Chairman, I move that we approve um the regularly scheduled minutes as proposed with the um change that the December meeting. Will be held on December sixth of twenty twenty three.
Your support? Support moved by Commissioner Barbarina and supported by Commissioner Dorsevitz to approve the twenty three meeting dates. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We know that the sixth may be available though.
Well, that's a year away.
It's a year away, so. Yeah, I thought I was just thinking the same thing.
Typically, yes, because that's your old day, the work session, work Wednesday.
Okay.
And then uh we have the updated zoning maps. Do you have a comment on that?
These are great. I was so excited, especially about the consent judgment. I'm so glad you like them.
So excited.
So these were created by McKenna, well, I guess me specifically, but. We have updated this top zoning map that you see that has lots of purple and yellow. That now reflects all of the rezonings that have happened since twenty sixteen. We've had a lot, you know, a decent number of PUDs, rezonings, everything else since twenty sixteen. And it was getting to the point where it was confusing to speak with applicants over the phone and for them to even figure out what their zoning district was. So this is not a change to the zoning map in any way. It is just a new version. The version you're seeing after that, that has largely black and blue, is a colorblind friendly version of the same map. So approximately one in twelve US males are red-green colorblind, so it's a very prevalent issue and it's something that I personally am passionate about, making maps more accessible. And this map was reviewed by a colorblind employee here at the township to determine whether or not it was suitable for colorblind readers. And we can all say, thank you, Glenn. Glenn helped me a lot. And the the challenge with a colorblind map is that at some point you have to incorporate textures to distinguish between the different uh, you know, figures and zoning districts. So to accompany the colorblind map is the Specialty Developments map. This is the same thing. It's shown on the non-colorblind zoning map, shows you where the PUDs are, consent judgments, um any conditional zoning. But we couldn't overlay it onto the colorblind friendly map because we had to use dots and dashes just for the baseline zoning districts. So um I brought these before you today because I just want to hear your comments on them. And if the commission approves of them, we will get the large versions in our office reprinted, update the ones on the website with these, everything like that.
So is the colorblind version, is that um just a setting on your in your software? It's not a, do you have to recreate the whole map?
That's custom made by me.
Wow.
So will this be able to be on the website too for the people that are?
Yes, it would replace the one that is currently on the website today. But yeah, I just want to hear your thoughts on all three maps, improvements, corrections, anything like that.
I I think it's great. I love them.
Yeah, I really like having the consent judgment map.
Yeah, this is awesome.
Okay, well, if there's no other thoughts, we'll replace them um and soon you'll see the updated versions on the website and. We'll get the new ones printed out to go out in front of the Community Development Office for the public to view. But yeah, that's all this item was. Good.
So the Ridgewood um neighborhood is under some kind of a consent judgment?
Yes.
I never knew that.
Yes, these are recorded consent judgments since, what year would this be? Or are the seventies?
They had to be, yeah.
And there are some older ones from, you know, the fifties or so that are only on laser fiche, but those only come up when someone has a specific question about them. These are the ones we have printed records of in our office.
So is the consent judgment with the developer in the township uh the Ridgewood neighborhood?
Yes, consent judgments are but usually between the municipality and the subject developer.
Yeah.
But they remain with the site.
Ah, right, of course.
My understanding is that when that uh neighborhood was going to be developed, they wanted to put commercial on the corner of Ridge and Powell. And the township didn't want that. So the agreement was they would not put the commercial in and but they would have smaller lots.
Yeah, and consent judgments can range. They can be about sewer systems, they can be about lot sizes, they can be about so many wide variety of things.
I just never knew, that's your neighborhood. I never knew that uh it was under a under a consent judgment.
That's why it is a little smaller there compared to what's around us.
And these are all ones that we have at the township on file, so people can come view them anytime they want. These are the, you know, very easily accessible ones for us.
Um, I just have, this is really helpful. I have a question about a parcel of land in the far northwest corner of the township. Bob, can you scroll up to that part of the? Um, all the way over to the left. Down just a little bit, okay. Um, north of M fourteen, west of Ridge, north of North Territorial. And south of the manufactured housing um area there is a pretty large parcel of land that's vacant. It's zone multifamily. I believe it's been that way for a long time. At one point in the mid nineteen nineties, when the township published its calendar every year, there was always a map in the back. And it showed uh that that area was going to be, I believe it was called Windamere Apartments. And it actually had the roads in there and the parking lots and stuff. And of course, that never happened. My question is, is there any um activity regarding this parcel of land that would actually uh end up being developed as multifamily or something else?
Um, maybe two years ago, there were some inquiries on the property, but since then, there has been no action.
Are you talking about these parcels right here?
Light brown?
Yes.
I never realized they were.
Okay, thank you.
Isn't that a um manufactured home park?
It is, the dark brown is.
Mm-hmm.
But I I don't know, I I'm having a hard time visualizing that.
Oh, I can't, okay. It's right after you cross over nor, uh right after you cross over M fourteen, right? Right after you cross over the bridge, if you're on Ridge, right after you cross over before the mobile home park.
Yep, that's it.
I didn't know that was buildable.
Isn't that the uh site where they want to put the billboards?
No, that's actually.
Oh, the billboard is here.
There, yeah, on the other side of Ridge.
So I I just have a question. I want to make sure I understand these two maps. So on the two zoning maps, the legends, should they be identical to each other?
No, they should not. So the traditionally colored zoning map also includes the consent judgments, PUDs and conditional zonings. Whereas the colorblind map does not, so those will not be included on the legend.
What you, oh, okay. Because I see this one on the color, the color map.
Yeah.
I see the conditional contractual rezoning, but I don't see that on the colorblind map.
Yes, that's because the colorblind map has to use dashing.
Right, that's what you're talking, okay, I got it. Thanks.
And if it's confusing, we could remove the consent judgments, PUDs and contractual zonings from the traditional map as well. And have this be the standalone map for those three items.
I I think it's helpful to see everything on the.
Yeah, I do too.
Base map.
I was going through some old boxes the other day and I found a map that I'll have to bring to you. It's a it's the neighborhoods. Um, you know which one I'm talking about?
The subdivision map?
Yeah, yeah. That was pretty handy.
Yeah, yeah, the supervisor's office talking to the.
Like the names of the subdivisions?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And even the, you know, Metro West one and Metro West two and Concept Drive, Corporate Park, but those.
The other areas, anybody wants me to zoom to?
I don't hear any.
Okay.
Wants to see anything.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need a receive and file or anything on this or it's just?
No, it's not technically a change to the content, so just.
All right. All right, on the five mile and Beck development discussion, so I I raised this issue up when we had our um last meeting, our work session meeting. And I just wanted some better understanding of what we can expect as a planning commission. So when the township goes out to look at a project that is completed or in the process of being built. What can we expect that they're looking at? Are they just looking at the built, potential building code violations? Or are they looking at things like, did the building get built the way it was approved?
Right now, the inspectors are currently looking at, does it meet the Michigan State of Michigan Building Code for construction? Not, does it have the correct soldier course or stone foundation, um architectural bump outs, relief?
Do they, I mean, are they legally, can they do, you know, do that? Can, or do they have no teeth to look at that or why do we do it that way?
Well, they they can. I think it's a question of where does, how is that integrated in the process? Um, who's responsible for conducting those? Mo- most times it's not an issue. Um, in the majority of time, the the plan that is approved, the construction documents that are approved are followed in the field.
Because they certainly haven't been followed on the two examples that I had been, that I gave. Um. And kind of coupled with that is uh should the ordinance that permitted the construction of that Panera site, should we look at that? Because if he could have put a bigger building on that, um, I don't know how that parking would have been. Since we were talking about parking, it's very tight. And even the Taco Bell only has um stacking spaces for three cars.
But the, so he could have, the answer is he could have put a larger building. The maximum lot coverage was not exceeded or even close to for this site. But it's dictated by the parking and he was right at that, meeting the minimum parking. Remember, there was a large discussion on if the outdoor seating counted towards his parking or not. Um, so. He couldn't add any more square footage to the site because he didn't have any more parking. The stacking spaces for the window, for the. The, the stacking spaces for the window, for the drive-through, I believe he's required to have seven, and it starts at the window, not at the ordering board.
Oh.
Technically going.
I, I looked at it from the menu back.
The window is the, the stack.
Is the window all the way up front?
Yeah, it's way up in the front.
Right there.
See, so if they're really slow, if somebody's taking a long time placing their order, that's where the backup can happen.
Or if it's just extremely busy, if they're not offering indoor seating as an option, right? If they've closed that part of the operations, that's going to impact it as well.
Yeah, they are slow, and the, the other problem with the, and this is something I think we should have caught, is there is a blind spot when you pull out of that, the window. I mean, there's the sidewalk right there. So as a, as a commission, we, we are not guaranteed that what we're approving is going to look that way.
Right. That's the lesson here.
Well, the...
So what's the point?
I mean, I, I think there's a couple anomalies that we've had to deal with, because there have been many other developments that have been constructed per the approved plan set. You know, there are provisions in the ordinance to revoke the site plan, but that often results in litigation, and is it an economic taking by revoking that site plan?
I know it's a difficult issue. And I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, I, I just want to better understand, you know, what, when we finish something, what is, what can we expect? And what is the process? So, yeah, it's been, I, I understand the process, and probably maybe ninety to ninety-five percent of the time, we'll get what we approved. Well, there's always a...
Seems like it's a, even though it's your ninety, ninety-five percent, it's, seems to be an oversight issue, really, making sure that five or ten percent, whatever, that we have the oversight in place to diffuse.
Well, we already talked about that, that, that retainage didn't, doesn't apply to facades.
Yeah.
I mean... That's... And the, and the landscaping that I raised up several times, I don't know, did this, did this particular development get their final CO?
No. There's still a bond being held on that property.
And the same thing with the Buddies and Starbucks?
For Buddies and Starbucks, yes, there is still a bond for that.
How much is the bond?
I don't know if I should disclose that.
So how much longer do they have? Like, this development has been open for some time, and earlier you said that they have a, a year, they have a certain amount of time to get their final CVO. Have they passed that?
Yes, they've had to do extensions for their temporary certificate, and they're going to have to do another one in order to carry them through into spring of twenty twenty-three for the landscaping at this point, because there's, you know, there's only so much you can do mid-October.
How many extensions can they get, or the length of time, is there a limit?
I'm not sure. That would be a building department policy question.
It's good that we at least have like ninety, ninety-five percent that follow all the hard work that we do and that you do.
Yeah, it's been difficult. I do appreciate the efforts that you've done on it. Okay, if there's nothing else, does anyone else have comments?
I just have a couple of comments on some, two signs. When I was driving here, the town carpet sign, it's green, but they have a bright white coming from behind it that has like this halo effect around the sign, and I don't know that that was our intention with approval, so I don't know, maybe.
What was the sign?
Is it the town carpet?
Oh, yeah, I noticed that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That one, it's got this bright white halo coming out from behind the green. So it just doesn't look this uniform for Ann Arbor Road, or like something they might have approved?
We didn't approve that halo light, it is indeed a noncompliance.
Okay. All right. And then I noticed the B of A sign here on the corner of Hagerty and Ann Arbor Road.
Which sign?
The Bank of America sign, because that was replaced, right?
Yeah.
And it's like it has two panels, and then there's like a box in the middle that's like a lot lower. And so not a straight box sign, but instead it looks like two panels with, that's kind of glued on to something. It just looked strange when I drove by, like, maybe they didn't finish building it? I don't know.
We'll check it out.
Okay. And then it looks like there's a light going in at the Henry Ford. Yeah, is that going to be like a flashing yellow or a regular light? Okay. We'll see how that goes.
Where's it at?
At the Henry Ford.
Yeah, between Hagerty and the.
On Hagerty or Ann Arbor?
No, on Ann Arbor Road, between Hagerty and two seventy-five.
Oh, Hines Park.
Yeah, it's hanging right now, like, parallel to the road, so it hasn't unactivated yet. But just, because there's an, I think it's Stripe that people can turn, I think they can turn, there's a left turn lane, so if you're heading westbound, a left turn lane to go into the Henry Ford, but I can see that entire lane backing up from Hagerty, past that light. So I just can't imagine how that's going to work out if somebody's wanting to turn into Henry Ford, but there's a big line of cars that are waiting to turn left on Hagerty, so we're just going to see how that is, right?
Good point.
You know, the state, you know.
But M. Gott said it was okay, right?
M. Gott, her name.
Okay. All right, we'll see.
Want to raise this thing about the bowling alley?
Um, I think, didn't we talk about the bowling alley with the flashing colors? I didn't see it when I was on the way here. Okay.
So two or three weeks ago, we met as a body to discuss the Gray's Greenhouse, and they seemed like they were, they certainly had some strong feedback. Have we heard anything about if they are going to make another run at it?
Yes, and they do still want to pursue the project. They were interested in having another special meeting with the planning commission, that would be November fifth, and I've, I've been working with the supervisor's office on a date that might work. But just with the election and some other events that are going to be held here, we're really looking at our eyes. So I think they might just come to the next regular meeting, the November sixteenth, and we just have an open discussion with them.
Study session for the Gray's Greenhouse.
Oh.
Yeah, I will be.
Have an additional study session, we're just kind of out of dates at this point.
I'll be out of town that, for the next meeting, the November one.
So when you're not at the next meeting, who's going to take notes?
I was wondering if Gail might.
I'll do it.
Okay. Unless someone else wants to take notes at the next meeting? Gail, I'll do it, you know, okay.
I had a couple of comments. First of all, you all probably saw the note from Mary Ann, the chairperson, the environmental leadership committee, about a volunteer effort at the rain garden at Blimmin Township Park, I think it was in, toward late September. I actually went to that, and it was really interesting, that rain garden was behind the big shelter there, and we worked there for about an hour and a half, I guess, really looked good when we were done. I encourage anybody to, if you ever hear of these, to participate if you can. I also wanted to shout out for Supervisor Icy, who came there and, unlike a lot of politicians that show up and then leave, he sat there and worked all the way through with the rest of us getting our hands dirty, so it was pretty cool. Along that same line, there's a tree planting project township park this Saturday from eight forty-five to noon. I won't be able to go to this one, but I did go to the one two years ago. It's very interesting, because they start off by kind of educating you how you go about planting a tree, and then you actually go off and you do the tree planting. So again, if anybody has the ability to do that, I think that's a very good township, public service thing. Last update is, the last meeting I told you, the zoning board of appeals was going to rehear the digital billboard case. We did that. I'll spare you the details, just the end was we voted five to zero to decline the applicant's request. So that's the update.
Any other comments from anybody, concerns? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Pastal and supported by Commissioner Gruger to adjourn the meeting at nine PM. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.